Good evening, I'm calling to order. Regular City Council meeting for the city of Hayden, Idaho, this Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, 5:00 p.m. May we get a roll call of council members, please?
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Matt, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
I think it's the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm not aware of any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight. So we'll roll into the consent calendar, which consists of approving the October 28th, 2025, City Council meeting minutes, approving November 3rd, 2025, special City Council meeting minutes, approving professional services agreement with environmental control for janitorial services, approving engaging with Alpine Summit CPAs for fiscal 2025 audit, approving of 2026 Coeur d'Alene School District 271, City of Hayden Facilities Agreement, approving of the deferred improvement agreement with Family Motor Company Incorporated, approval of Interstate Concrete and Asphalt Company, change order four for the Ramsey Road Extension Project, and bills for payment. Are there any questions on the consent calendar? And would like to make a motion?
I motion that we approve the consents calendar 1A through 1H.
Second.
The motion is second, and a discussion on the motion being made. Get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Okay, moving into visitor public comment, Abby, do we have anything?
No forms have been turned in.
Okay, we have no forms. Okay. We'll move in then to the public hearing. Our first public hearing tonight is supporting the 2045 Comprehensive Plan update. Staff is going to present, and then public comment will be taken, directed to council, and then we will close the public hearing. It's all right. Is it the same as what was available online?
Yes, it's the same as.
Thank you, Donna.
Why is it I come into council meeting and then my family calls me? Okay.
Share your screen on GoTo.
Uh, how do I get that?
Um, the black.
Can you help me, okay? This one?
Yeah, the black screen.
That one?
Yeah. And then share. And then share.
Just click on that. This?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll follow along. And then go back and open?
Yeah.
How to practice? Okay. Uh, tonight, we're kind of at the last public hearing of a long path forward to this point for the update to the comprehensive plan. So why is the 2045 Comprehensive Plan update needed? So the existing comprehensive plan was last updated in 2020. Uh, the comprehensive plan guides land use and community vision, and the plan is a generalized, comprehensive, it's long-range, it's not stagnant, so it's continually update, and it's not a zoning ordinance. And additionally, a comprehensive plan is required by Idaho State Code. So in Idaho state law, in 67, 6508, uh, in 2020, there were 17 areas that we had to cover, and then a couple of years ago, they added an 18th area groundwater, which wasn't a big deal because we'd already addressed groundwater in our previous plan, we just did an update to retweet part of that language. Um, how does the city use the comprehensive plan? Well, it's a guide for land use decisions, so code text amendments, conditional use permits, long-term planning for sewer planning, transportation planning, parks, and other municipal services, and then for zone code or zone map amendments. So Chapter 1, you can, uh, there he is again. Chapter 1 has the introduction and the vision, and the vision for the city of Hayden is that it's a well-managed Idaho town that prioritizes responsible growth, mature infrastructure planning practices to provide a variety of housing options, to encourage small business development, and to protect its natural resources. So that's similar to the old vision in the fact that, uh, we're talking about preservation of open space and efficient roadway systems, encouragement of that small business culture, and protection of natural resources, and it's different in that this plan, uh, provides for tools for defining types of future uses and their locations, it provides updates on completed projects and future projects that have occurred in the last five years and future projects, and it provides for managing responsible growth.
I just wanted to point out that the previous vision statement also included small-town feel and family-friendly, and, uh, that was just something I was advocating for staying in the, um, vision statement there. I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the 2040 Comprehensive Plan was adopted in the fall of 2020. We did a Hayden City survey, and those results came forward, um, in 2023, and it covered about 1,200 responses. We've had workshops regarding possible amendments to the comprehensive plan with Planning and Zoning and City Council in September, October, November, and December of 2023. We had an open house with members of the public and the Planning and Zoning Commission on the vision, the goals, policies, and spring of 2024. We contracted with SCJ Alliance to review the vision, goals, and policies, um, and their impacts to the existing comp plan, as well as if they met Idaho State statutes. And then we worked with them in July through September of 2024 and up through February of 2025. And then we've been doing an update to the comprehensive plan in the spring, summer, and fall of 2025, and here we are today. So the goals that were in Chapter 1, or the vision that was in Chapter 1, was addressed, and then we migrated into Chapter 2, which is the policy framework, those goals and policies. Those goals are broad statements indicating a general purpose, they're to set the direction, they're a general expression of the community values, they're somewhat abstract in nature, they're not quantifiable, they're not time-dependent, but they're suggestive of specific actions that you want to see happen to get to your vision. Policies, they indicate a clear commitment to the, of the Hayden City Council, they reflect the topical nuance, and they indicate how the city will respond to meet that vision and those goals. The actions are initiatives, projects, or programs to put the policy into motion. So if you look at Chapter 2 of your, um, comprehensive plan, Table 21, um, identifies the chapter listings that are broken up, and those elements that we talked about, those 17 elements are covered in these chapters, and they have abbreviations that are to the left. And then when you look at the goals and policies, the goals are numbered, or the goals and policies are numbered, they have what the goal or policy are, and then they have a reference, so the goals reference the policies, the policies reference back to the goals, and then they also have, um, an implementation reference that's identified which chapter you're going to find those goals and/or policies located. So Chapter 3, demographics. So the demographics have all been updated, um, to the, uh, from the 2019 to the 2023 category, um, and just, I took snippets of them to give examples of the updates that have occurred, and so the update in the median age population... The update to the median age population actually shows that the citizens of the city of Hayden, the median age has gotten older, from 40.7 years of age to 43.1 years of age. Um, and it also shows that the 2040 estimated population, uh, went down by nearly 9,000 people in population, so the expected growth rate is reflected, um, in this as well. Goes on to talk about the fact that, that, um, Hayden's population is still expected to have a steady growth rate. Um, Hayden trends toward older adults who have an above-average income, reflecting Hayden's appeal as a desirable place to live, work, and retire. Can I break just for, this is like the fifth call I've gotten from this person, can I go answer this and just take a quick two-second break?
I can keep going if you want. Do you want me to keep going? So moving through the new updated plan, you'll go to Chapter 4, which covers our land use, believe this is an area where we saw some changes, uh, where there were discussions around, uh, what residential would be, as well as, uh, the remaining other land uses, so those have been updated as well.
I have a question. How does mixed commercial compare to mixed use?
Can you, I can have her answer that when she comes back.
Okay.
Uh, and you can read the two of them, they're, I believe you have a copy of the plan as well, or the, um, slides as well, so. It, it looks like, by reading this, that the difference is the allowance of residential uses in combination of the commercial uses.
The mixed use was the same.
Council may recall the...
I think you can also clarify that mixed use is a zone and mixed commercial is a land use.
Oh, sure. And maybe I made that assumption, so in this case, we're not talking about zoning, we're talking about general land uses. So you might have a neighborhood right now that has some commercial uses as well as residential uses along a street, this would be a commensurate level designation as it acknowledges those uses as they are existing.
Okay.
Potentially, and maybe that's where they're going as well.
Thank you.
So council may recall the, um, meeting where we discussed where land uses would belong, this is where we kind of tried to group specific land uses to areas of the city, and you'll recall that in that process, there were a number of different areas of the plan that we had to take into consideration, so where are our, your downtown areas, our major arterials, our grid work for our street systems, as well as our public facilities. So in response to what we heard at that meeting, the proposed future land use map was drafted and presented as part of this update to the plan as well, so you'll see as, um, some new areas that were different, if I recall, is the residential lots encompassing more, of our mixed, or excuse me, the upper right-hand corner there, the green area, I believe, went from maybe yellow to a different color. I, I'd have to have Donna speak more specifically to this, I'm jumping in. We, uh, there was a question about the designation between mixed use and commercial, um, I did my best to try to help. Mixed use and mixed commercial.
Who asked the question? I did. Yeah, it was a previous slide, I was just asking, um, what's the difference between mixed commercial and mixed use?
And the answer we got was one's a land use and one's a zone.
That's correct.
But you're not the same.
Okay.
Correct. So one of them is a, is a land use expectation of how it's going to develop, and one of them is its own designation.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so this is the future land use map as it was kind of proposed, so the biggest changes to this use is that the residential, the area in yellow encompasses all their varying lot types, lot sizes. Uh, mixed commercial is again that mixture of uses, find on the previous slide. Um, the green is new because these are areas that are known or anticipated recreation, um, public and private. So as an example, uh, this area up here is open space, um, in the Hayden Canyon project. Uh, this is the future Hayden Canyon Park, as an example, Crawford Park is here, this is the Hayden Area Regional Surabard's Land Application Site. And the other thing that happened with this is that we decreased our area of impact, our area of impact used to include all of these properties down in here, and it used to include, um, areas that are up here as well, but as Raffrum has grown south, um, kind of, it's no longer in the area of impact, those were part of the shared tier, and the shared tier has gone away, and so this is, uh, what was proposed, uh, to go to Cooten County, and so they're working through the hearing process for the area of impact, but this is what we've proposed so far. We talked about special use areas in Chapter 4 under land use, and those would be the neighborhood commercial areas, that's the limited-scale businesses that could be in your neighborhoods, they would maintain a building typology and pedestrian orientation, and they require a conditional use permit. And then also the central business district, which is our downtown, that's our main street, it's a mixture of residential, commercial uses, and it has design standards that promote pedestrian first. Basically, it's just one lot either side of Government Way, from, uh, down here about just south of Paul Bunyan, up to Dakota Avenue, one lot either, one lot deep either side of Government Way. Uh, the Coeur d'Alene Airport, kind of a smack dab in the middle of the city of Hayden, we nearly, uh, surround it with, uh, the city, and so, uh, uh, five years ago, we really looked at those runway protection zones and recognized that there were certain land uses that were really in conflict with those, and we kept that, uh, with this update as well, so, um, it recognizes the sound contours and the safety compatibility zones. So how is the city addressing growth? Well, we look at maintaining neighborhood integrity and character, transportation improvements to relieve impacts of increasing population and people moving to and through the city, provide quality housing options for current and future residents, for a range of both income levels and lot sizes from rural, uh, to central business district, maintain open space and provide access to parks for all current and future Hayden residents, coordinate the timely development of efficient, effective, and environmentally sound sewer water and other utility infrastructure, and growth should be accompanied by the development of infrastructure, public services, utilities, and preservation of open space and recreational facilities within the city's means. Chapter 5, these are demographics that were, uh, updated, uh, related to housing, specific to housing. Uh, median house prices increased 142% from 2013 to 2023. Median rent increased 78% from 2013 to 2023. A quarter of the homeowners and nearly half of the renters are considered to be cost-burdened, which means they spend more than 30% of their household income on housing. Hayden has almost nil for a vacancy rate, when something comes available, it gets gobbled right back up. 78.4% of housing in Hayden is single-family detached housing. 21% of the homes in Hayden are renter-occupied, it's one-fifth of the houses in Hayden are renter-occupied, and of the, of the other cities that we did comparables in the 2020 Comprehensive Plan, which included Garden City and Mountain Home, Cooten, and then also Cooten County, and Idaho State, the state of Idaho, the city of Hayden has the highest median rent at $1,676, and these are 2023 figures.
Is that studio through three-bedroom, that's just the median rent?
It's the median.
Yeah.
Chapter 6 is about living and natural environment, we talked about groundwater and aquifer in this chapter, we talked about Hayden Lake, we talked about air and water quality in this chapter, we talked about hazardous areas, this would be the wildfires, floods, steep slopes, toxic sites, environment, and the, who's, who the environmental stewards are and how we are part of those, and resource protection, and emergency preparedness, we talked about the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan that was recently updated, um, just this year. This map, the Critical Natural Areas Map, is in Appendix B of the Comp Plan as one of the maps. Uh, Chapter 7, Transportation. The transportation plan, the Parks Master Plan, the Sewer Master Plan are talked about in the Comprehensive Plan and adopted within the plan as kind of an extension of those. So Chapter 7 talks, um, in generalities about transportation, really points back at the Strategic Transportation Plan. Updated in the previous plan, we'd up, we had listed various projects we wanted to have done, and we were looking forward to completing and what have you, that's all been updated. Talked about bicycle facilities, public transportation, air is transportation, but it's by flight. We talked, talked about the Hutter Corridor and where we are in that process, and, uh, the completion of Ramsey Road happened this year as well. Chapter 8, Economic Development, this, uh, uh, graphic has not changed too much, um, in the last five years, it has gotten, I mean, some of the percentages are different, but the basic, uh, industry of Hayden has not changed in the last five years. So one of the things we've talked about is becoming a live-work-play community or, or aspiring to do that. Um, this is an inflow and outflow of jobs, so in 2020, we showed that nearly 5,000 people are commuted into the city of Hayden, and about 5,400 people commuted out of the city of Hayden, and just about 750 folks actually lived here and worked here, and in 2025, the updates, I'm using those 2023 numbers, um, show that about 7,200 people commute into the city of Hayden, and about 6,000 people commute out of Hayden, leaving only about a thousand folks that actually live here and work here. So as you're trying to look at that economic development, trying to have people who live here, work here, um, part of the opportunities that are available to the city include the Chamber of Commerce, Hayden Urban Renewal District, Coeur d'Alene Economic Area Economic Development, Penhandle Area Council, Neighborhood Commercial Area Development, Central Business District area, downtown development, North Idaho College Venture Network, Idaho Small Business Development Center, getting your trails to actually connect so you can ride your bicycle to and from work, uh, small business environments, live-work-and-play environment by developers, and industrial development, all of those are opportunities. Chapter 9 talks about park and rec, and again, inclusive of the park and rec, Park Master Plan. There, we updated the existing park amenities that have been improved, like the improvements at Crawford Park, um, and Frisbee Golf at Broadmoor Park, those have been updated in there, and then we also identified anticipated new parks to be developed in the near-to-mid term. Chapter 10 talks about local services, and when people think about local services, they oftentimes thinks about their sewer and their parks and their streets, but other local services could include the library, the schools, uh, Cooten County Sheriff, the Fire District, uh, utilities that are provided by others could be power, gas, telephone, fiber, water districts, solid waste, and then we also have six commissions of the city, the Arts Commission is helping with the bench program, um, and Abby hates it when I say that she is kind of a, a real driving force to make sure that that project is actually going to happen, and works really hard with, as a liaison between the Arts Commission and the Public Works Department. That's going to be really cool when it, we have benches all the way down to Government Way, and you can go, I'm going to go sit at the whatever bench as a placemaking location, from a design perspective, that's pretty cool. Uh, the Historical Preservation Commission has been working on a book that, um, I talked to the chair today, and we're working on the index, and we're still hoping to get that darn thing printed before Christmas, so we're very excited about that. Uh, Park Rec and Forestry Commission, um, helps with, uh, planning, the recreation planning and implementation throughout the park, they work on Arbor Day and the bike, um, the bike, uh, repair and, what's that thing called anyway? That's it, thank you. The Bike Rodeo, um, and they're working on strategic planning for McIntyre Park that will be out here coming soon, you'll be seeing open house notices in the near future about what to do with McIntyre Park up here. Planning and Zoning Commission, um, reviews all land use actions before they come before the City Council, as well as, uh, code amendments that are appropriate that they would review before council, I think they're going to do a report here tonight at some point. Um, uh, the Public Safety Commission works with our, uh, city staff and, and our council related to our, uh, safety of our citizens, and they have a plethora of experience that is really, really, we're blessed. And then the Veterans Commission, um, puts on the Veterans Day Ceremony, that if you've got to attend on November 11th, um, is phenomenal, uh, as well as other activities that they participate in, so we are very blessed in the city of Hayden to have volunteers that work on all six of those commissions that help staff and help the community at large. Chapter 11 is about community design, you talked, you heard me talk about the benches a little bit with community design, but there are design standards in Hayden, Hayden that are reflective in our subdivision standards, they're related to specific sites and specific zone designations, there are certain standards, public art, historic locations, uh, the interpretive sign went up at Stoddard Park as part of, uh, the history, um, maybe some wayfinding signage will be coming soon, and then a landscape design exists in a plethora of locations, most notably in the central business district. If you keep scrolling through there, you're going to hit an appendix, it has four parts. Appendix A is action implementation, Appendix B are the maps, Appendix C is the public process that got us to this point, and Appendix D is a snapshot summary of the history of Hayden. Just a little kind of how to read these tables. The previous action plan was drafted different than the goals and policies, and we decided that it kind of needed to look like it was all part of the same plan, so it got reformatted, it's got a number for the action, uh, it's got whatever the action is, and the task or tasks to get the action completed by, it has a timeframe, some of them are ongoing, some of them are short-term, and we like to get them done sooner than later, some of them are long-term, because again, it's a manpower kind of thing, how to get all this done. The next column is the lead, it might be community development, it might be public works, it might be some other entity that we're working with, so it could be a variety of things. Then the reference to either the goals or the policies, because the action is trying to get some goal or some policy accomplished, and then the implementation references, again, back to that chapter that you can find, um, how this works. There are 27 actions that are identified, um, and then the maps, which are in Section B. And then the maps, which are in Section B, Appendix B, these are the most visible components of the plan, yet not any more important in guiding future development. Maps provided here include that future land use map that you saw earlier in the presentation, the Central Business District overlay that you saw previously, the Critical Natural Areas that was also earlier. We updated the Water District Service areas. We've got about six water districts in the city of Hayden, six water purveyors. They're not all districts, six water purveyors in the city of Hayden. We have two school districts in the city of Hayden, Coeur d'Alene and Lakeland, but we're kind of budding up to post fall. And the maps that are delineating the future transportation system, the sewer system and the park system are again in those long-range plans that are made a part of this Comprehensive Plan. And then the boundaries delineating types of uses are not finite, but outline a general area for designated areas within that 300-foot plus or minus on the land use map. So, the public process can kind of be broken up into, you know, three parts. The citizen engagement in the fall of 2023, the planning and zoning, all of that push and all of that information back in the spring of 2024. And then again, additionally, another questionnaire on the website in the spring of 2025. Public hearing was held with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the public hearing here tonight. Additionally, in that public process section, since this is an update and not a replacement of, is all of the information from the previous Imagine Hayden public process that led to the original document. Well, Hayden is 70 years old this summer, and there's Government Way before the Government Way project in the upper left, and Government Way in the bottom right-hand corner is what it looks like today. So, it's a little bit of an improvement. So, noticing, it was properly noticed in the Coeur d'Alene press on October 3rd for planning and zoning. On October 31st, first City Council sent public service announcements out to a plethora of news outlets, and we posted public service announcements on the city's website. We did receive one comment prior to the public hearing with Planning and Zoning Commission. We received no comments written or otherwise for tonight's public hearing. At the conclusion of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they voted that it were recommending approval of this Comp Plan as it's written today. The City Council can choose to approve or continue or deny. And I stand for questions.
Any questions for Donna?
I have several, Mr. Mayor, but I don't need to go first.
You can go first, Tom.
Some of these questions, I've actually talked with Donna previously, so it's more of a just for public consumption. So, beginning at the, okay. In previous meetings with council and planning and zoning, and actually when we deliberated on land use actions, I've heard a couple council members suggest or ask, can citizen survey be used as a reference point in deliberations? And what I heard was that if it's not in the Comp Plan, we couldn't refer to it. So, it's now kind of sort of in the Comp Plan, but it's more of a summary.
It's got a, it's got a, the, the citizen survey is a digital survey result. It does have a link in the, in the Comprehensive Plan, in the appendix, that will point you back to the digital version itself, and it does include a summary as well.
Okay. So, does that mean that in future deliberations, if any one of us here on council wishes to refer to that, we can go to a specific part of that and, and use it as a point of question in our deliberations?
If you use it appropriately.
Okay. Which means we seek the guidance of, okay.
No singular point of data within your Comprehensive Plan is going to be a single finding for you. You know how that works when you're trying to make findings in relationship to an application. It's a cumulative effect. So, if within your standards of approval, you think that a finding related to the Comprehensive Plan is appropriate and important, and that that survey is an element of that, you would use it. You're not going to say, I find that I deny because the citizen survey says X.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appendix B, maps. I understand that the city basically sources a lot of its information on maps from other entities, but for example, I noticed that the, the environmentally sensitive areas map is not accurate. And it might be because it hasn't been updated by some of the other source.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, as a point of process, you're just regurgitating what other authorities who have control over that would, would establish as?
So, the Critical Natural Areas Map was derived from a map that was in the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan that was approved prior to the, the original Imagine Hayden Comp Plan. And I reached out to Cootney County when they were doing the, Ty's not here, so that's not helping me. I keep looking.
He's over there.
So, I reached out to the folks with, because Ty's our representative, sorry. Anyway. Ty's our representative that's been working on the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. And so, I reached out to them and asked them if they were doing an update to this map. And as of a week ago, from their mapping division, they had said they were not. So, then I was left with a map that existed previously, and I don't have any better data to replace it with. So, that's why it was not updated.
Last question. A little bit more involved, this is the one that you and I have talked about. I've talked to the mayor about it. So, I understand we've taken a long time to get to this point here. It's been like herding cats to get council and P and Z to come to a consensus. I'm not here to slow the process anymore. And for that reason, I talked to you about it, Donna, which is I have the interest in Appendix A, the action implementation, and then what happens after that, driving code changes. And I will cite that right at the beginning of the document, it says this is a living document. So, I just want to acknowledge, because you said and acknowledged it to me, that council here will have a chance, working with P and Z, to update Appendix A, which I think is, I mean, that's the next step after passing this document, but it is part of the document.
Correct.
That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Donna?
Yes, I do. Hi, Donna.
Hi.
So, just jumping off of what Tom just referenced, Appendix A, the implementation. Following the Comprehensive Plan revision, or the Comprehensive Plan beginning five years ago, there were zone changes proposed on properties based on the future land use map.
There were.
Will that be happening again?
There will not.
With this, okay. What's the, how do we know that, what kind of guarantees do we have that zone changes won't be, citywide zone changes won't be implemented at this, with this new?
First of all, that's a council decision.
That's where I was going.
It's not going to be a staff decision. That's going to be a council decision whether or not there would be a need to make any adjustments to your zoning designations. If you remember, last time your Imagine Hayden actually changed the names of your zones, and that's what precipitated the zone change. You don't have any of that in this update.
Okay. So, this new zone designation of, what was that one on?
Mixed. Mixed commercial.
Yeah, mixed commercial. Is that a new?
That is not a zone designation.
No, but that's new. I don't, that was a new designation.
It's a new land use.
New land use. Okay.
It's not a zone designation.
Okay. So, those, those properties that are now mixed, going to be mixed commercial, what are they now?
I would refer to a zone map. They could be commercial or residential or, it's whatever the zone designation is.
Okay. And so, someone owning those properties could ask for mixed use?
It could ask for a zone map amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And if they're in an area that's mixed commercial, and if they wanted to do commercial only and they were residential, they may ask for commercial or they may ask for mixed use. Both of them would allow a commercial use. If they wanted to put in a multifamily dwelling, a duplex or higher, then they would ask for mixed use. Would depend on what they would want to do on their piece of property.
Okay. And is all the mixed commercial west of Highway 95?
I believe so, but I don't know how to look. Well, I could go back to the, there we go. Pretty much.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. Thank you, Donna.
Which slide would you like me to leave up?
Uh, let's put up, well, it might change depending on if anybody gives testimony, but I'd say for now, let's leave up the three possibilities, the last slide.
Okay.
All right. So, at this point, we would take any public comments. Abby, do we have any public comment forms?
None has been submitted.
Okay. None have been submitted. Does anybody in the audience wish to provide testimony regarding the Comprehensive Plan Okay. I'm hearing none, so we will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to our next agenda item, since we'll decide that later. And our next agenda item is the First Amendment to the Hayden Urban Renewal Capital Development Plan, Hayden Urban Renewal Project of the Urban Renewal Agency of Hayden, Idaho. This is also a public hearing, so staff will present, and then the public will have the opportunity to comment direct to council.
So, I am going to open the conversation with the public hearing, and then I'm going to hand it off to our council that's online, that'd be Megan Conrad. So, this is the culmination of the last two years or 18, a little over 18 months, that council's navigated this process of deciding to amend the urban, Hayden urban area, urban renewal area, excuse me. And Megan will kind of go through that process and provide a timeline, and I'll be here to kind of navigate the slides for her. So, Megan, go ahead.
Thank you so much, mayor and council members and Lisa. My name is Megan Conrad. I'm an attorney at Elam and Burke in Boise, Idaho, for the record, 251 East Front Street. I'm here today to present the First Amendment to the Hayden Urban Renewal Capital Development Plan. And go ahead, next slide, please. Starting at a high level, the general purpose of this plan was to add area around critical intersections along Government Way. And this would allow revenue allocation dollars to be used to enhance intersections to improve traffic flow and safety. And then additionally, it, this amendment does support the existing and planned public improvements within the original area, looking, projecting out through the duration of the remaining years of the plan. So, just some facts about the existing project area. It's 720 acres. It was established in 2005. It is a 24-year plan, which means it technically terminates in 2029. But both the statute and the plan recognize that the agency received its final year of revenue in 2030. Next slide. You should be pretty familiar with this map at this point. It has not changed in quite some time. The larger boundary is the 720-acre original revenue allocation area boundary. And then you can see the five areas that are adjacent to the existing revenue allocation area boundary and predominantly track along intersections along Government Way. They're divided into each of Area 1A, 1B, 1E, 1K, and 1F, and collectively refer, we refer to them in the project area as nodes. And combined total acreage is 19.225 acres. Next slide. So, as indicated when we kicked it off, the purpose of this plan amendment is to address the addition of the amendment area, so that 19.225 acres to the existing plan and project area, to update the list of public improvements and to update sections of the plan based on statutory changes as well. When you do a plan amendment, there are two types of limitations. The first is the 10% valuation limitation, which I think we'll get to in another slide or two, but the other factor is the 10% geographic limitation. So, if you have a 720-acre project area, you can only add in one time up to 72 acres. So, this again seeks to include 19.225 acres, so we're well within that, that limitation. An amendment also cannot extend the duration of the original plan. So, by adding this area, it, the plan is still going to terminate in 2029, recognizing the final year of revenue will be received in 2030. Therefore, plans adopted before 2016, there is in general the ability to amend the plan without risk of a base reset, and that is under 50-2903 subsection 4. In, in addition, though, in 50-2903A, there are certain amendments to plans that are not considered technical modifications that would trigger a base reset, and one of them is an amendment to add 10% of acreage under 50-2033. So, under either a pre-2016 plan or a post-2016 plan, there's no risk of a base reset from this type of an amendment. As a note, with the changes to the statute this last session, for the amendment area only, this does not affect the existing revenue allocation area, but Fire District and Ambulance District specifically have to consent by resolution to be included in the amendment area. So, if there's not a consent from those two districts, either of those two districts, then the levies will be slightly lower, meaning that just for the amendment area, there could be just slightly less revenue. It would not have a significant change to the economic analysis hearing. Next slide. So, as Lisa Ailport indicated, this process has gone through a significant number of public meetings. And the process itself, while we only have hearings about a year and a half, it did start prior to Elam and Burke being involved in March of 2024 with the identification of, and, and review of the areas to be amended into the plan. So, as, as we've discussed, we have our first phase of a, of a plan amendment, which is the eligibility determination. And so, an eligibility report was prepared, and the area was deemed eligible, except that report was accepted by the agency in September of 2024. And the City Council likewise adopted the findings in the report in September of 2024, and then essentially directed the kickoff for the planning process for the First Amendment. And it took some time to get through that First Amendment for a number of reasons. Really wanted to focus on the projects as, use it as a planning tool for the, to, you know, outline, you know, what project can be accomplished prior to the end of the district. And as well as, as we got closer to the 2025 values, being more firm, we wanted to make sure we were using the most up-to-date values. we wanted to make sure we were using the most up-to-date values. Um, because of the timing of when the levy rates are certified, we are using two thousand and twenty-four levy rates with um some uh estimation or projection, but um trying to use the most up-to-date data. So as you can see, the draft plan was reviewed in public meetings at several opportunities, as well as review of the project list. And then finally, the agency board considered the First Amendment at its September two thousand and twenty-five meeting. And then that kicked off the formal uh transmittal and distribution process that's outlined in Idaho Code, where the Planning and Zoning Commission considered the, whether or not the First Amendment conforms to the current comp plan. Um, and uh, and then there was the formal presentation to the city council that occurred on October seventh that was held in advance of the notice of public hearing being published in the newspaper. There was two publication dates, on the seventeenth and the thirty-first of October. And then that brings us to today. And as part of this transmittal process, copy of the plan, the hearing notice, the agency resolution, and the maps and legals were all circulated to the overlapping taxing districts at least thirty days in advance of this public hearing as well. Next slide. Um, as indicated, it, we did take some time with making sure that the project list was updated um and then using the most current up-to-date values. So, next slide. So these are the lists of the taxing districts that the the boundaries of the amendment area overlay. You'll see the two italicized taxing districts, the Tootney County Ambulance and the Northern Lake Fire District. Those are the ones that have the ability to um consent by resolution to be included within the amendment area. Um, but all of these taxing entities were notified. Next slide. So the Idaho Code, section fifty twenty-nine oh five specifically outlines the elements of what must be included in a plan with specificity. So as we review the elements, we're really looking with an eye to the existing plan and then how um this First Amendment amends certain provisions of that. And so each element is identified here with this section that is applicable to the uh element. Uh, I'll just run through them really quickly. The first one is the, what we refer to as the ten percent valuation test. And that simply means that the uh va, the base value of the existing district plus the projected current value or the current value of the amendment area, that combined cannot equal more than ten percent of the current total taxable value of the city. So there there is uh another slide in in the plan, you'll see that calculation is done. And then two is a statement listing the kind number and location of all the proposed public works or improvements within the revenue allocation area. That can be found in a narrative format in section three oh one in the original plan and as amended uh in the First Amendment. And then as well as the information in the attachments, uh, five, five A, five B, as supplemented by five C, which combined, those are the economic feasibility study and they have a lot of project information in them as well. Uh, subsection C requires an economic feasibility study. Um, as just discussed, that's attachment five, five A and five B from the existing plan, as supplemented by attachment five C, which is the supplemental uh economic feasibility study that that really goes along with the First Amendment. And what an economic feasibility study does is it presents a realistic development scenario that looks at uh revenue projections, making a number of assumptions. It looks at um projects and those estimated project costs and determines whether or not there is sufficient revenue available to complete the identified project. Um, and then we have a detailed list of estimated project costs that can be found in the economic feasibility study. Uh, the fiscal impact statement showing the impacts of the revenue allocation area on other taxing districts. That has been updated in section five oh four point eight, as well as the data included in the economic feasibility study informs that analysis. Six is a description of the methods of financing that uh is primarily included in the sections three hundred of the plan, as well as section five hundred and the economic feasibility study. There's a requirement for a termination date, uh, that's in section eight hundred of the plan. Um, and as indicated, this has no impact on the termination date. And then uh, there's a description of the disposition or retention of assets upon termination of the district. Um, this section eight hundred has no uh, there's no, this amendment has no impact on that analysis. Next slide. Um, we've covered both of these points, but it's just a summary of the valuation limitation, where we look at the combined base value, which is of the existing plan, it's about forty-eight million. The amendment area is about eighteen million, so total sixty-seven million. Ten percent of the total taxable value of the city is three hundred and fifty million. Um, so we're well within that ten percent limit and as described, we're also within the ten percent geographic limit. Next slide. So now we get into just a summary of, next slide, of the economic feasibility study. Um, just highlighting again some of the legislative impact. Uh, you know, to the extent we don't have uh resolutions consenting to be included in the amendment area from the Ambulance and Fire District, that will just have a minor adjustment to the amendment area revenue projection. Over the remaining life of the plan, the amendment area is projected to generate a little bit more than nineteen thousand dollars. So it's not, it's not having those uh levies support the revenue stream, it's not gonna be a significant economic impact. There's also a highway district that uh overlays this area. There is a special provision under fifty twenty-nine oh eight that specifically addresses the allocation of revenue uh when there is a highway district. But because the City of Hayden has responsibility for the maintenance of of the roads or highways, this isn't gonna be an a specific issue here. Next slide. So uh, by way of summary, in the economic feasibility study, this is an analysis looking at today through the end of the life of the district. And the uh cumulative total revenue projection is going to be that six point two million dollar number. Um, you can see the projected levy rate does decrease each year at about two percent annually. Um, it's it's contemplated that growth will likely drive down that levy rate over time. So uh, next slide. So with that, um, there was a a fair amount of time investigating and putting together this project list, um, which totals nine point one million. It's a little more than the six point two million because it does consider the existing funds the agency has uh in hand at this point. And it shows a reasonable uh projected path forward, um, should all of these assumptions come to fruition in terms of the revenue generation piece um and uh agency budget capacity for projects and estimated project cost. So the the focus is um primarily three categories, the Civic Center, McIntyre Park, and then some significant intersection and road improvements. Next slide. So to the extent there is more revenue than originally projected, excuse me, or to the extent there's an opportunity for a different prioritization of projects based on either development, uh developer-initiated or to the extent um there there might be a city-initiated project with some additional grant funding that comes into play, there could be reasons to um reprioritize some of these on the list. And so here's an additional uh identification of uh of all, of projects that that could be funded as well. And uh, a few more road improvement projects and park improvements, um, and uh uh, public art property acquisitions, so, next slide. So the study concluded that while the expansion area itself isn't going to drive a ton of revenue, um, but it brings in critical areas. And with the remaining duration of the plan and the uh use of the uh existing revenue allocation area funds, um, those projects uh are going to be able to be funded uh using the overall revenue capacity of that original district. So the, it was found to be feasible. So as part of the urban renewal plan, we just overlay the areas on the future land use map and the zoning map. As you can see, it's uh a mix on the future land use map of of uh mixed use and commercial, but zoning is is predominantly commercial use of those areas. Next slide. Um, okay, and so that brings us to today uh with the public hearing and ordinance readings and consideration. Uh, just uh, just to understand the next steps, um, you, to the extent action is taken on the ordinance, there are a number of steps that have to be taken uh prior to December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five so that the amendment area can have a retroactive base year of January one, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, and that is the, there has to be a publication of the ordinance summary. We've got the recordation of the ordinance and the steps, we have to separately record the map and the legal. And then there's another round of transmittals to state and county officials, as well as the overlapping uh taxing districts. And uh, we talked about uh base reset. Um, and just to make clear, the existing district will still have a January one, two thousand and five base year. So it's just the amendment area that could have a January one, two thousand and twenty-five base year. So, next slide.
Yeah, I forgot to hit save.
So.
So I'll.
Uh, we can just skip.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can go and save it and then we can bring it back up later.
Yeah. Yeah, yep.
Okay. As it relates to.
I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Yes, as it relates to the expansion, does anybody on council have questions?
I have questions regarding the future investments. Uh, that page with the future investments, it had the Civic Center uh getting um five million, almost six million dollars in improvements, and the City Hall and McIntyre Park getting two million dollars in improvements. I was uh looking at the map and are those properties um already in the urban renewal district?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, or Councilmember, yes.
Okay, so those won't, those won't be affected at all by this um expansion?
Correct, the plan is a requirement of the new, I believe, the new legislation uh when we're updating the uh hurra ordinance. We, this is a requirement, so they had to put a plan in there. It's kind of funny because what we're really here to talk about is just the intersections that we're adding to the district, but there are elements of the overall plan that now legislatively are required to also be in there.
Okay, so about eight million dollars of what we, of what's gonna come in is going to be spent on Civic Center and the park and City Hall, but only like one and a half million on road improvements. And originally, about a year ago, road improvements were the only things that were being considered. So um, I'm just concerned that this has um changed so much to where it's not so much the roads, but other things that they could have done anyways.
Well, good news is it's a plan and council will be uh working with our partners at hurra to on whatever projects are are done. Again, this is, I guess it's a good thing that it's a requirement, but it's not a uh, it's not a final, I know Lisa, you wanna help me out, it's not necessarily exactly what the city's gonna do. It's just a plan as of today. Is that fair?
Megan could probably answer more directly about what the um specificity of the statute under fifty twenty-nine oh five, if I got that uh section quoted correctly.
Yeah.
Uh, but the requirement is that they have to be able to show as part of their feasibility that the money generated will go to projects within the district that it can afford to do it on. So there is, whereas previously, the the law in effect at the time in two thousand and five simply said that they had to do projects within the district. So they're not getting more disciplined about where those projects will go. And uh, again, pursuant to that section of Idaho Code, it stipulates that they have to have reasonable costs associated with that. So that's another element of that. Now, to the degree at which the cost actually, what they will be, that'll be a matter of us moving into that, those intersections and realizing what work needs to be done on cost element. They, they're guessing, they're uh not engineers, so uh, but realistically, the point of the whole plan process is that there, the money generated will go to planned projects within the district and those planned projects have reasonable tieback to the feasibility of the money being generated. So it's, it's circular. Megan, you can feel free to add more if you need to.
Yes, so the, um, so these. So I was concerned that when we uh first talked about this, uh, that it was supposed to be roads and intersections and now it just looks like that's not taking priority anymore. And it looks like more legacy kind of projects rather than the the roads and um necessary things are being um prioritized. And, you know, this is um nine million dollars of taxpayer money, so this is out of our property taxes. So another question I had was, uh, are these items on future development, are they being funded one hundred percent by urban renewal?
That's a a question that uh, again, needs to be answered when we get into the specifics about the projects at the intersection. And I'd like to to correct, I think, the record a little bit about where we're at today versus where we started at. Originally, it was tasked to the staff to move forward with making projects eligible for funding within the urban renewal district, specifically the intersections, for which the urban renewal agencies commented back by their legal counsel that they could not invest one penny into those intersections if they weren't all owned by a col, the collaborative intersection own uh properties with, sorry, within the district, meaning that they were in that urban uh rev, revenue allocation area. So we moved forward under that pretense that we were making those eligible for project money to be spent or urban renewal dollars to be spent there, to the degree at which it was limiting to that. I don't know that council provided that direction, so I'll leave that to council to provide.
So before.
Mayor, uh, council, yeah, Mayor, councilmembers, there, this, I would say that this plan amendment does have a two-pronged function. And one was, as uh Ms. Elport indicated, that in order to be able to use revenue allocation funds in those particular intersections, those parcels had to be included in the district. So that's sort of phase one. I think phase two, and in in consideration of both the requirements of fifty dash twenty-nine oh five, but also with an eye towards the remaining duration of a district, it presented a real opportunity to try and narrow down with a finite amount of dollars over the next several years, what is a reasonable path and how can we reasonably spend these dollars moving forward? And so it, the, you know, the agency had to take a look at, you know, their their goals and um try and mesh them with this area that we're mending in and actually created a a project list that provides a great amount of transparency and and direction as they enter into the the final uh quarter or so of of their remaining plan. So I hope that helps.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing no questions.
Just really quick, Mr. Mayor, before you open up to the members of the public to comment, I just, I went in and was able to update, uh, there are really two components of a motion, depending on the direction that council wants to go, the adoption and then the suspension of rules. And I'll leave this up um when you are ready, if you decide to go that far. Um, of course, it wouldn't be at the end of this public hearing, it'd be at the time that the ordinance is uh up for consideration later on in the agenda. So with that, I will.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the part where um if the public wants to comment, uh, to council, they can. Abby, do we have any forms?
No forms.
Does anyone in the audience wish to provide comment? Okay, seeing none, so we'll close this public hearing. We are now gonna move on to our new business and our first item on our new business is an action item. It's our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four financial audit.
Mayor, if I could really quickly just confirm that at this point, do you need Megan to stay on for a section of new business for the ordinance? Consideration?
Only if you need her as a technical expert to answer questions.
I think we can go, uh, unless you feel otherwise, Megan.
I'm, I'm happy to defer to you. I I can be available on text if you want me to hop back on.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Megan.
Okay. Thank you all. Take care.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I don't know what's on the agenda next, I don't have in front of me.
The audit.
Audit, okay, do you have something?
Nope.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
You know, we wanna keep a quorum, and I'm observing council members going to use the restroom. I'm fine at the moment, but will there be a breakpoint where?
If we need one, just ask.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tony Hackwith, I'm with Alpine Summit CPAs, and we performed the financial statement audit of your September 30, 2024 year-end. I believe that all of you received an electronic copy of that, our report, this evening. I'm just gonna go over the results of our audit, the reports we issued, and then point out a few financial highlights, and then answer any questions you may have. So the first report is at the front of your financial statement package, and that is the independent auditor's report, and that's where we report on your financial statements as a whole, whether or not they're materially correct. And our report is a clean opinion, or it's also called an unmodified opinion, which means as a result of our audit procedures, your financial statements are materially correct. We have to issue a report on internal controls over your financial controls and also compliance with laws and regulations. That is on page 48 and 49. And as a result of our procedures over internal control and compliance, we've also issued what's called a clean or an unmodified report there. We did actually, I guess, actually we did have one compliance finding, and that's just related to the timing of your report being submitted to the state, and as you're aware, there were a lot of turnover and staff changes that resulted in that, so.
We're so happy, Tony, to not hear that next year.
Yes, yes, you are on track, yes, for sure.
You're finally out of the quicksand of finance.
Okay, pages 50 and 51 is called your single audit report. Since you spent more than $750,000 in that year of federal monies, then we also have to perform additional procedures over those monies, and to make sure that you spent them on what you received the money for. And we did not have any findings in that area. And I'm just gonna talk about a few financial highlights. If you turn to page seven, this is your balance sheet for the city over your governmental funds, and the main operating fund is your general fund. It shows your assets, liabilities, and the result, assets, liabilities is your fund balance. Your total assets at September 30, 2024 were just over $12 million, or almost $13 million, I should say. The prior year, you had about $11.7 million in assets, such your cash receivables and such liabilities, which, you know, are a result of timing differences and such, were pretty comparable to last year, $751,000 in amounts owed to vendors and other liabilities, and $847,000 in the year before. As a result of your assets, such your liabilities, is your fund balance, and your fund balance at 2024 September was $11.7 million, and the prior year was $8.8 million. So, and that was a result of mainly some increase in revenues for the year, and I'll go over that later. So page 10 is your statement of revenues and expenditures. Your total revenue increased by about $2.4 million, and those were mainly due to property tax revenue increases, and you had $692,000 in your license and permits, which mainly was a result of building permits and growth. You also had a $664,000 increase in your investments, your interest income and fair market value of investments. And your expenses increased by about $1 million, and that was mainly your public safety contract, that increased by about $494,000. And then Public Works, and that's road and parking lot maintenance, that increased by $550,000, and that's, again, you know, depending on the needs and such of maintenance, that's gonna change year by year. So your net income is $2.9 million for the year. Now I'll just go over a few financial highlights of your sewer fund. That's the statement of net position, which is a balance sheet, is on page 13. And again, this shows your assets and liabilities. Your cash actually increased by $11.1 million from the prior year, and this was due to some fee increases, as well as some capital contributions from, for the lift station from Harzbeet and developers. Your capital assets increased by $2.9 million, and that was a result of your projects for phase one and phase two. Your liabilities in the sewer fund were $16.3 last year and $15.9 this year, and again, that varies year to year based on the timing of projects and your payables that you owe to vendors. And page 14 is your statement of revenues and expenses. Your charges for services increased by $3.6 million, and that is due to increased building, increased development, and also you had some rate increases during that year. Your operating expenses increased by $2.5 million, and most of that is passed through Harzbeet for capacity sold and residential and non-residential improvements, so. Your non-operating revenues, you had a $2 million grant that you spent, those were ARPA funds that you received and spent in this last year. And then you had capital contributions, which is a new item, or generally new item, and this related to the H6 lift station, and you received $10 million from Harzbeet and also developers for that project. So your net change in position or net income in the sewer fund was $15.4 million. I'm not going to go, so page 18 through 39 are your footnotes to the financial statements, and I don't wanna bore you, but they actually are your accounting policies and additional information on your assets, liabilities, income, and expenses. And then pages 40 through 47 are some miscellaneous statements, some statements of revenue and balance sheet for some of your smaller funds, and some other schedules related to proceed and such, so not gonna go over those either. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have questions for Tony. Looks like you get off easy this year. Thank you so much for this work, it's very important, and we all very much appreciate hitting this milestone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. All right.
I do think, I believe that my memo suggested a motion to accept the financial statements, so that we can then move forward with producing the fourth quarter financials.
That is true. You do need to, did not escape this without an action. Is there any deliberation, or would someone like to make a motion regarding item 4A? Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah. I would move to accept the proposed fiscal year 2024 audit as presented. Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion being made? Get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember DePries?
Yes.
Okay, our next action item is ordinance to amend the capital development plan or revenue allocation area for the Hayden Urban Renewal District.
Mr. Mayor, there's two components of this motion. The first to adopt, to consider adoption of the ordinance, which there's a motion in favor of that, you can certainly say, I move to adopt or I move to deny. And then the key component of this section is that we authorize, should you move to approve it, to read it by title only. I'm not sure anybody wants to read the 40-page ordinance in its entirety.
Do we get to make the mayor do that?
No, if you motion that, you'll be the one reading it.
Then the second part of that motion is to consider the suspension of rules, which under Idaho Code 52, 902, requires half the council plus one, and that would be to publish the ordinance, to suspend the rules, which is under Idaho law required to have three readings. And then I would also recommend that whichever you choose on this one, that if you choose in favor, you do by summary only, and that means that what we publish in the paper is the summary title, not the, again, the 40 pages. And I wanna, I guess, reiterate the purpose of considering that tonight, as we have two more meetings left, but as mentioned by our council in the presentation, that after the adoption by council, staff has to prepare that to publish in the paper, and then we have to also, according to her testimony, summarize to all of the agencies that, as well as get it to the State Tax Commission and the county. So it's staff's recommendation that you consider suspension of rules, so that we can meet that timeline of the 12/31. With that, I will put that back up.
Okay, our first procedure for adopting an ordinance is to call for a motion to read the ordinance by title only, suspend the rule of reading it in full on three separate dates, and to approve the first reading.
So moved.
In a second. Any discussion on the motion? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember DePries?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Okay, I'll now read the ordinance by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hayden, Idaho, approving the First Amendment to the Hayden Urban Renewal Capital Development Plan, Hayden Urban Renewal Project, which First Amendment seeks to annex certain areas into the existing capital development plan project area, which First Amendment includes revenue allocation financing provisions, authorizing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this ordinance and other required information to county and state officials and the affected taxing entities, providing severability, codification, and publication by summary, approving the summary of the ordinance, providing for waiver of the reading rules, and establishing an effective date. Now call for a motion to adopt the ordinance on having passed its first reading by title only, and that it be published by summary incorporating the title as the core of the summary upon passage.
So moved.
And a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the process. So we had the presentation, and at that time, there's a period where we could ask questions, but are we gonna be deliberating at all, or is that pass due?
Yeah, that was when we did the public hearing.
Okay, all right.
There are no other questions, may we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember DePries?
Yes.
All right, now we can move on to 4C. This is also an ordinance. It's a Marx Ranch Right-of-Way vacation ordinance. I'm gonna follow the same procedure.
So if you'd like, I can just, for a summary of the public that's here tonight, let council know and the public that at a previous meeting, the council authorized the vacation of right-of-way, which remind me, I think it was right around 4,000 square feet-ish of area?
Yep.
And in order to complete that vacation and transfer that public right-of-way into the ownership, SP, simple ownership to the adjoining property owner, we have to complete the ordinance.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, so same thing, calling for a motion to read the ordinance by title only, suspending the rule of reading it in full on three separate dates, and to approve the first reading.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second, that.
A second, is there any discussion on the motion? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DePries?
Yep.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
I will now read the ordinance by title only. An ordinance of the City of Hayden, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for right-of-way vacation as described in section one of this ordinance, and located in the city of Hayden, providing that title. Said vacated right-of-way shall vest with the owners of adjacent property located to the south of said vacated right-of-way, providing severability and providing an effective date. I would call for a motion to adopt the ordinance on having passed its first reading by title only, and that be published by summary incorporating the title as the core of the summary upon passage.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember DePries?
Yes.
All right, that's all the ordinances for tonight. Our next item is the resolution to adopt the 2045 comprehensive plan. We've already had a brief by staff. So before we make any motion, this would be the time for council to perhaps do a deliberation. Okay, I'm hearing none, does anyone wanna make a motion? There's one provided in the memo, if you need sample verbiage. Sure, thank you.
I'll take a shot at it. I move to approve the resolution adopting the 2045 Hayden Comprehensive Plan update and future land use map, repealing and replacing previously adopted resolutions in conflict with this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion being made? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember DePries?
Yep.
All right, we are now gonna move on to reports. First one is city administrator report and calendar review.
So I did my best at this meeting to give you all a number of reports across the staff here in the departments, and so I would encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to read those, you can go read them, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, even after this meeting, if you have any on those. The one area that I will spend a little bit of time explaining to you, if you haven't had a chance to read it, is the area of impact update with the county. The process has been, I would, I would say, an arm a little frustrating at the county level, simply because it wasn't, in our opinion, managed in a way that gave us clarity on our plan, even though we have our plan to them well in advance of the 12/25 date, 12/31/25 date that was due. The county chose to try to get all the area of impact ordinances and plans together in one presentation to their planning and zoning commission, and then subsequently the Board of County Commissioners. They unfortunately, in that process, didn't follow prescription, a prescriptive law, or the law, on advertising the public hearing, and so now it's going back to them to reconsider that in light of their public hearing, so they're not thinking that they'll have adoption of plans until mid-January. The law is specific, and it says that we have to have a plan by the end of this year, we have to, or we have to have a map by the end of the year. And so in consultation with the City of Post Falls Attorney, recently, as of yesterday, the Post Falls is moving forward with the county to try to bring forward, excuse me, the map, which would be, excuse me, considered in compliance with the statute that was, that we're all trying to meet that deadline on. So we anticipate that we'll have an agreement with the VOCC or the county sometime in January, but likely might have a map in place by the end of the year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, the other ones are updates on the department-level work.
On the subject of maps, so the area of impact notice that you gave us, there's, the Hayden Lake Watershed Association came back with some strong opposition, and they referred to a map, but there was no map, and so.
So the map was presented to council back in the summertime, where we looked at, mostly, I think the majority of our attention was on the shared tier area, which needed to, we no longer could have shared tier, so. So the area in question that was brought up as far as strong opinions, we'll call it, as you mentioned, was relative to the, is it 65 acres owned by?
It's east of Lower Hayden Lake Road to Hayden Lake, south of Honeysuckle. It's two, it's three properties.
Three properties.
Two of which are owned by Dalton Irrigation District and one that's owned by the Richards family.
Richards, thank you. So one of the big areas of concern was whether or not by being in our area of city impact, it would lend itself to being developed because it has certain easements restricting development. But that is a very narrow look at what annexation could include, so I feel like they overlooked the opportunities of a potential park or annexation opportunity that doesn't necessarily coincide with what they view as development. But that said, the law is very specific. It says if any property is adjacent to or budding the city, as long as we have a plan in place, we can still annex. So if those property owners should desire to want to come in, there's still an opportunity for that to happen.
Could you rattle off those roads again for me? I'm trying to bring up a map, and it's not, well, they're finally loaded, but could you just?
Can we just bring up a map, please? Sure. If the council is willing.
Here's Richards property. Okay, that's it. All right, got it. I thought so, but I wasn't sure.
So at the end of the day, it doesn't, if it's in our area of city impact or not, it doesn't prevent the landowner from seeking to annex should they wish to do so, and the city does not pursue any hostile annexation. So we really are working with property owners that desire to come in, so that doesn't prevent them.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't, if there's any other questions, that was my report.
Do we want to ask about a bill pay date?
Yeah, so it's my understanding that the 12/23 date that council approved in January of this past year, we will not have a quorum at that date. And so for the benefit of the public that's here tonight, as well as staff, is there a preferred date that we can work towards? Because that is a very important meeting for a lot of our vendors who are trying to get their last invoices paid by the city so they can close out their books. And it's very important that we try to have that second meeting so we can make sure that those bills are paid. We can have a very light meeting. We can try to attempt to have that. If you want to hold the date and we can get a quorum, otherwise I'm seeking interest from the council on another date that would work.
What would you think would be the latest? I mean, the 15th, the 22nd, what, as far as, what window are we looking at?
Yeah, the closer to the end of the year, the better for us, just simply because it allows more invoices to make them, their way into us so we can get them together. So ideally, it would be great if we could have one that week or the week after, but if you have to look at the week ahead, the later in that week would be preferred.
I will be either in the area or available for a go-to meeting if we need, no matter what, the day.
We also have a public hearing that we're trying to get on that second meeting as well.
There goes my commitment to keeping it short.
It might be short anyway.
Oh, okay.
But we are trying to get that there.
Well, as far as the week after Christmas, yeah, I'm out of pocket. So that's a no-go for me. I'm available the week before, but not that week of or the week after that to the end of the year.
So you're out after the 22nd?
The 19th, it sounds like, right?
Yeah, the 19th would be the latest date that I could go to.
She can't make noticing. If it's before the 23rd, it has to be 23rd or later.
We could get our bills paid, just not the public meeting or the public hearing.
The reason that we were trying to get the public hearing in at the end of the year is that Commissioner Erickson voted on the meet, on this particular public hearing. If it comes in January, he'll have to recuse himself.
They don't, they're not sworn in till...
But if it comes in January, he'll be sworn in. He'll be sworn in.
Not on, not till the 13th. What's the date? Because I think if we could do it that first...
Before the swearing in?
You could theoretically do it then.
And the 13th is January's first...
I thought the idea was old business was done with old council, we swear in, and then any new business goes with the new council.
It's the first regular meeting, so if we had a special meeting.
I don't think it's an issue if we have to recuse one council member, but I appreciate the idea.
They could hear it ahead of when they swear him in, too.
Okay, as long as we can figure it out, we'll figure it out. I just need to know when to notice.
So the 13th.
Okay.
So if we did around the 19th, would we get our bills paid okay?
If you guys are willing to do short meeting, we'll try to keep it that. We would graciously ask for that.
Can we get a quorum on the 19th?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'll do that.
All right, 19th it is. Five o'clock? Yeah.
I hope not. I tried to work for...
Okay, next up, our favorite Hayden lieutenant is here tonight. Good evening. He's brought us an October law enforcement report, which I will admit I overlooked was already in board book. I wasn't used to seeing it there.
As well as a prosecution service report for the last quarter of the fiscal year.
Yes. Yeah, and I'm open to any questions. You're going to see in the middle there a pretty significant difference in police-initiated activity, and that's nothing to be alarmed about. We stopped creating a specific call. When deputies were on routine patrol, they would initiate what we call a directed patrol, and that would initiate a call for service, if you will. So we stopped doing that, and that was in an attempt to track the Hayden time, and as you know, that wasn't effective. So the deputies were still in the area doing the work, they just didn't initiate that active patrol call, and that's the difference in the numbers there. So other than that...
Are you talking the 9/36 or something else?
Yeah, the police-initiated activity is 9/36 for October compared to 7/89 in September. So does that make sense?
Well, it's actually up, right, from September to October?
Correct. It is up 147, and I looked at that wrong, and so that's why I was like, "Don't be alarmed." So that's a good thing. If you look at your, the stats here, one thing to maybe be aware of is you can see that assaults, specifically aggravated assaults, are starting to climb, even in your three-year trend there. For 2025, you're already at 15, which is pretty significantly above your highest year of 2022. So, and we've got a couple months left. So same thing for your thefts and your regular, non-aggravated assaults. So something just kind of interesting.
Any questions for lieutenant? Okay, I guess while they're reading, I have a couple if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
I was curious, I had a short conversation with the undersheriff where I saw Idaho State Patrol had pulled over someone in the vicinity of Hayden and the 95, and two deputies pulled in behind. And he explained, for safety reasons, whenever you see a fellow law enforcement, you just pop in, even if there's no issue. My question is, how is that reflected in, is that part of police-initiated then? Does that go on these stats, or does that not show up on our report?
It would show up, the call itself would be an agency assist, and that could be a number of things. It could be helping out with, one, they could just be checking on the trooper, seeing if he's okay. It could be helping with SFSTs, it could be helping with searching of a car, it could be helping with transport of a prisoner, so I'm not sure, you know, exactly what that particular deputy did or those deputies did. That would fall under a agency assist, and yes, that would be officer-initiated.
Okay, so that part of our police-initiated 9/36 call might include just simply...
Those increases in, yeah.
And then my second question, because I haven't memorized it, I noticed we've got 85 citations and 14 accidents. Is that par for the course? Because that seems really high. I want to encourage our citizens to do a little bit better and not speeding, and definitely don't hit each other.
I don't have year-to-date for the citations, but 85 traffic citations in just Hayden for a month, yeah, that seems...
Three a day.
That seems a little high. And what that could be is, you know, our traffic team could be doing emphasis in high-crash areas, and so they could have been doing some of that stuff.
But it's not necessarily that they're citizens getting those.
That's true. Could be those drummers.
It could be non-citizens, yeah.
Fair enough, thanks. And then my last one is, I noticed our priority one call response time has gone up considerably, at least based on my memory. Any explanation for that?
We don't, the non-emergencies are going to be, it sounds like it could be backwards, they're going to be a little bit faster just because deputies are going to probably make that phone call. So if a citizen assist or something like that comes up, they're going to grab that by phone and answer that question versus going to the scene of a call. So I don't have an answer as to why that, why that's up the, again, with our tracking time that we're trying to get to the bottom of, it's really, really difficult to pin down the specific in route to a call, on scene of a call, and clearing a call accurately when there's so many different deputies assigned to that call. The tracker just kind of doesn't mesh with that very well, but...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Getting back to this aggravated assault, if I could, we had one in October, and 15 year-to-date, so, but one and a half a month. Physical assault, I mean aggravated versus base, you know, regular assault, what takes it to aggravated?
There's a weapon involved.
Oh, knife, gun, some type of weapon has to be involved for aggravated. Okay. Do you have any idea what that might have been?
This particular one was more of a road rage, there's construction going on, and it was a mental health, too. It was a mental health juvenile, and he pulled a BB gun on somebody who thought it was a real gun. So it ended up being lesser than that, but to the person, you know, the victim, it doesn't make much of a difference to them, but...
And while we're on, you bring up mental health, call for services, I mean, what's the, how's the determination made that it is a mental health issue and not just somebody breaking the law or doing whatever they're doing? You know, what ticks off that mental health box?
The mental health are typically going to be your psychological calls, your suicide threats or completed suicides. We're gonna, it's going to be anything where a mental health has a component of that call. So it could be just a domestic dispute, but one of them is diagnosed with mental health, and that was the origin of the call, maybe too many meds, not enough meds. Does that make sense? Any, mental health is a factor in the case, it's going to be labeled a mental health call.
I was just kind of curious, is what to the deputy or whoever, you know, on the scene, what is it that triggers them to say, "Okay, this is a mental health," and I get what you're saying.
Yeah, and that's identified by either the victim or the suspect. We don't diagnose anybody.
Somebody gives you information?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And you're seeing, you're seeing increase in those. I mean, it's pretty common. Mental health is probably one of our top drivers for calls for service right now, unfortunately.
A call related to a mental health issue, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Please pass on to our deputies our continued and sincere appreciation for keeping us safe.
I'll do so.
Thank you very, very much. Any reports from council, boards, et cetera?
Yes, I have one. Okay, last week, November 12, I attended the airport board meeting. It was a regularly scheduled meeting, and it's one of my duties as a Hayden City Council member. So since it was regularly scheduled, I missed the special city council meeting here on the 12th. But they discussed a lot of things, snow removal, but I think it's really interesting that they're going to start having the tower year-round, and that's 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM every day. So year-round tower operations, I think, is really interesting. So that's my report for that. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, are there any requests for future agenda items tonight? Okay, I'm hearing none at this point. We're going to, our next agenda item is to move into executive session in support of Idaho Code 74206-1F, and that requires a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? A second? Any discussion? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, for the public, I wish you all a very safe drive home, and we'll see you next time. Let's take five.